Good morning, welcome. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we beseech you divine guidance on this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us dear Lord wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from June 24th.
I will second the motion.
Motion, second, any discussion? Roll call please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes. Next up, is there any public comment regarding pending resolutions? Anything pending resolutions? Nothing? We will move on to the Engineers' Office. Dan Becker is here today. Dan, welcome back. Long time no see.
Morning. Yes, it's nice to be back. I've got two resolutions for your consideration today. The first is the necessity to close Manonie Road for some garb rail replacement, and the second is approving the final plat for the Hillsong subdivision in Montville Township, and then our weekly permit list.
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second the motion?
Motion, second, discussion. Roll call.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you. Have a great week.
Thanks, Dan. We have economic development on the list, but they are not here yet, so we're going to move on for HR with Holly Maren.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personnel changes resolution today, we have four new hires, one in sanitary, two in maintenance, and one in transit, three rate increases, two in sanitary, and one at job and family services, two position change, one in maintenance, and one at job and family services, one date correction in transit, one leave of absence at job and family services, one return from leave in maintenance, and three resignations, two in sanitary, and one at job and family services.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second the motion?
Motion, second, discussion. Roll call please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next up Brett Thomas for Finance.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning Brett.
Good morning.
I have 11 resolutions for you, and unfortunately, no great jokes today.
Unfortunately, you said?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Man, tougher. Our first resolution is expenditure adjustments for various funds. This is a bill that came in for the wayfinding project that needed to be paid out of the contract services instead of the project capital fund. Our second resolution is our sales tax distribution to the various school districts in Medina County. This distribution is in the amount of $4,460,283.92 for the second quarter. Our third resolution is the creation of the Community Corrections Act (CCA) grant. This is in the amount of $979,943 for adult probation. Our second grant next up is our Community Corrections Act targeted community alternatives to prison grant. This is our TCAP grant in the amount of $824,332. Our fifth resolution is closing the fiscal year '25 and creating the fiscal year '26 Sheriff Motorcycle Safety Grant. Our sixth resolution is authorizing the acceptance of the Community Corrections Grant, which is not the same grant as the CCA grant, in the amount of $427,324 for adult probation. Our seventh resolution is approval of an agreement between the Family First Council and Alternative Paths for Youth Services Coordinator. We do this annually, and this one is again in the amount not to exceed $50,000 for the year. Our eighth resolution is approving transfer of inventory between offices. Our ninth resolution is declaring excess property. Our 10th resolution is our travel for the week, nothing out of state. And finally, our 11th is our weekly bills in the amount of $1,167,983.44.
I'll make a motion to approve the 11 resolutions.
Second the motion?
Second. And I didn't have the 11th one.
I didn't either.
Economic Development's not in there either.
Oh, okay.
No, they were in your electronic package.
That's what I was going to confirm.
Yeah, they were there.
The 11th was just the total number.
Right, correct. And I just want to make sure that we were, that it was all published correctly before the meeting. So, any other discussion? Roll call please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Thank you Commissioner.
Yes.
Brandon is here.
Yep, and that's why I was shifting gears, so we'll go ahead to, thanks Brett. Go ahead to Brandon with Economic Development. We reordered things a little bit this morning, so, thanks for being here.
You were late.
I was, I was. We're in a meeting downstairs, sorry. Thankfully, I don't have 11 resolutions, I just have one. This is approving a revolving loan to High Voltage LLC. It's a foundry, they have a planned expansion. It's going to be a super cool space. It's going to add a lot of additional square footage to have events, community type stuff. I was in there last weekend or the weekend before. They were having a movie night for kids in the community. It's a super cool space, great entrepreneurs, great business owners that, we played in the keep in Medina County for a long time. So, this, just to refresh your guys' memory, is using the federal funds that we have delineated down to the state of Ohio that we're able to request. It is a big amount. It'll probably be the biggest revolving loan fund that we do to date, and in turn, in the resolution, there's amortization schedule that shows the payments to the county that will then be able to reutilize for other businesses that need it will be considerable.
And for information, the dollar amount was again?
500,000.
500,000.
Yep, and it'll create 22 new jobs.
That's great.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second the motion?
Motion, second, discussion. The only other thing, is it the space that's on site that they?
Correct.
Where they did the beer fest and those things in the past?
Correct, so they're renovating all that interior space.
That needs some upgrades.
Yeah, that utilization is outstanding. I mean, it really is. It's a fantastic project.
Thanks Commissioners.
Roll call.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Yes. Next up Matt Springer, County Administrator.
Good morning.
Hey Matt.
I have three resolutions. The first one is authorizing the Drug Task Force to replace three vehicles. These are coverts, vehicles used as part of their undercover operations, and they will return three vehicles to help purchase these items. Second resolution is approving a 30-year lease with the Medina County Joint Vocational School District for the use of 6,300 Technology Lane. Obviously Commissioner Swedick put in a lot of work to kind of bring us to this point here. And then third and final resolution is approving a change order number one. This is associated with Medina County Jail Security Platform Project. There was some telecommunication conduit that was buried underneath the concrete slab that we had to relocate, so this change order is $5,090, and that project is nearing completion as we speak.
I'll make a motion to approve the three resolutions.
Second the motion?
Motion, second, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd also just like, I'd like to also thank Steve Christman for his leadership on this project. I think he's doing great things for the community.
I'm glad we're moving forward with it. That's going to be great.
Yeah, I just want to thank Colleen for her whole work and everything on this, and dedication, as well as Chris and Matt, that they've worked with this. This is going to be outstanding for the next generation of adults out there in terms of educational opportunity, and it's going to change a lot of people's, a lot of families' lives in the future, in a positive way.
For sure. Great. Roll call please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's Matt. Next up, we have department updates. Laura, I believe you're kicking us off this week.
Morning.
Morning.
I'll start with picnics on the patio. They are so far so good, going great. We had over 100 people on the 13th of June, and about 120 last Friday. We always check the weather, but last Friday, there was a pop-up thunderstorm, and we were from outside to inside in 10 minutes. It was amazing. It was like a bug-out. I was like, oh, everybody grab something. So, there were still over 120 people there. It was, it was much success. That's the first time in all the years we had it that we caught rain in the middle, because usually if we know it's coming, we'll just set up inside. But it all worked out. Our July picnics are scheduled for the 11th and the 25th. They take place from 11:00 AM to 12:30, and hopefully, outside on the courtyard. Farmer's Market Report, we have well over 300 participants in the program, in the voucher program, that have signed up in Medina County. So far, there has been an expenditure of about $2,000 of benefits, and we hope to see that try and continue. I mean, we're in a time period now where produce should be coming in regularly, so people can be utilizing those benefits. The market on Medina Square, as well as the market at Cornerstone Chapel, are both approved for vouchers. I love that one at Cornerstone Chapel. It's much smaller, but for anybody with a mobility issue, it's great. You can pull up almost to the stands and get to that, get to those farmers, so that's wonderful. And also, the Red Wagon, which is just outside of northwest Medina County, I believe in Columbia Station, they're taking the vouchers as well, and you can go out of county and utilize those vouchers. So, if any farmers or farm stands are interested, they can call Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging, or they can call us, and we will let them know how to get signed up. I think the biggest thing for small businesses, like so, so many things, is the time when the vouchers are submitted to when the check is cut. A lot of, you know, there's some overhead there, and some, you know, things are tight, so some people aren't able to sign up. So, I'm happy that the larger markets are doing that, and I hope that the utilization will continue. Any questions on that part? Okay, just want to, because I know we've talked about it a few times.
Year two, right? That's a little.
Yeah, exactly. I don't know, maybe in the next couple of years, I'll be like, whoa, smooth sailing. That would be fantastic. Just a quick capital improvement update in our building and senior adult services. I know there's a couple of things going on in the building, but at our level, I know that Matt is working now with Brian. They're close to putting up the bathroom, out for bit our bathroom updates, and that should go on Bit Express hopefully in the next couple of weeks. We're still hoping that that project will start at the end of August, right after our last picnic. On a different project, in the middle of August, the Maintenance Department will begin demolition of all the cabinetry in our craft room. That capital project is being paid for in full by the Senior Adult Foundation, and so they, it's going to be demolished, new floor is going to be put in, new cabinetry, sink, and repainting. So, the total for that project is probably going to be about $50,000. That's all foundation funds, so I couldn't be prouder of that foundation and what it's doing to help our seniors. The capital stuff is great. The buying of meals and supplying of gift cards is greater, but it's all, it's nice to have, to be able to have new things, and to be able to afford that, and to have that foundation support. Of course, as you also know, we have in the future, an elevator project, and possibly a generator project that we're building, so that's going to be on, on the agenda in the future. But to keep senior clientele up to date, I mean, obviously, a lot of displacement's going to take place. We have bathrooms that are going to be closed. We will have an elevator that is going to be closed eventually for a few weeks. We won't have an art room, which is utilized two, three times a day for art groups. So, I have quarterly meetings with center participants, and everyone's invited. I just think it's really important.
Did you have that ramp that could come into the patio, though?
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, yeah, absolutely. That's what they will utilize. But I just think it's important that people will know, just to remind them often of the construction, and so they remain well informed. So, every time they meet, and it's in our newsletter, just so you know, this is coming up. I'm sure we'll still have people going, why are the bathrooms closed? But that's kind of the nature of the business. It's, it's fine. It's temporary. Everybody was really excited about the plans. I shared those since they were finalized, as we're moving from two, two large bathrooms to four individualized bathrooms. So, everybody will be able to use their own restroom in that area, so it's really exciting. So, they're happy about that. Of course, they will have to use a different floor to use the facilities for that time that's down. Speaking of being well informed, like my seniors, I just want to take a minute to thank Commissioner Hambley for his presentation of the various proposals regarding, and updates regarding property taxes. He came to our Advisory Council on Aging and Disability last week and gave a presentation, and I, everybody, it was very well received, and everybody was happy to be more informed, and I'm sure he'll continue to do that, as he's the representative to our council, but it was a great presentation, so thank you. Finally, back to the foundation. Our biggest fundraiser of the year is on Friday. It's the Twin Sizzler out here on the square, and parked semi-legally in the loading dock with a load full of stuff, because maintenance and, and Matt are kind enough to let me use the loading dock to store supplies for a week or so. So, I will be unloading my car right after this, but it's a great event. We'll have about 1,000 people there, and that is Friday morning. The first race is at 7:45. So, I'll be up early on the holiday, but it's great.
It is amazing how many people come on a holiday for that.
Yeah, it's great.
It's amazing.
Good job in today's paper, by the way, the Gazette article on seniors.
Did it talk about the population?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was nice.
Yes, I think, I think Anderson, for the, for the interview, the population is just booming with seniors. We're at, depending on what you read, between 27 and 29% of this county's population is age 60 or over, so just keep doing the job we're doing. There's plenty of clients out there.
Yep. And I also appreciate you sharing with us the concept of parking semi-legally. I think that's good. I'm going to make a mental note of what that is.
I like to ask forgiveness, not permission. I probably shouldn't say that up here, but.
I'm sure it's fine. Thanks Laura, thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Denise Testa, next up, Planning Services Director. Morning Denise.
Thank you, good morning. So, we have our July meeting tomorrow, and as a reminder, it will be held at the library here in Medina. So, hopefully our round robin is over, once the, once we're able to zip up and down in the elevator. So, our July concept plan, we do have a concept plan that we're reviewing in Granger for our August meeting, which again, will hopefully be held here at the county building. We have major subdivisions in Sharon and Hinckley Townships, and text amendments from Lafayette and Homer, and a text and map amendment from Harrisville, so we'll have another busy month. I met recently with Chatham Township regarding their comprehensive plan, so that was a very good conversation. There may be some opportunities there for us. For our program year Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, so our Lodi sidewalk, construction is starting on Monday. The Brunswick Street construction started on Friday. The battered women's shelter van, we're working on the vehicle specs and the procurement, or Wadsworth sidewalk, we're just waiting on the technical specs from Wadsworth. And then our Senior Adult Services and Rental Assistance, Food and Rental Assistance for Senior Citizens, we'll be meeting soon to start distributing those funds as well. Our program year Community Home Improvement and Preservation Program, also known as CHIP, application was submitted last Tuesday, June 24th, so we'll probably hear something later in the, the fall. I'm continuing to present fair housing presentations, and that will include our countywide, my countywide community meetings as well, with all of our township cities and villages will include fair housing information. Then I'm also going to attend the Medina Fair here in August, which I'm very excited about. I've always enjoyed the fair. Our zoning inspector, Networking Community, also known as ZINC, we held our first meeting last week, and that went very well. We had some very good discussion. The Health Department attended, which was also very helpful. And our next meeting for that will be in, in July, hopefully upstairs in Balcony Bee. In addition to that, we are, we are also continuing with the cost of services study as well. So, Steve, I think we might want to meet with OSU Extension to kind of get the wheels moving a little faster on that, if you're okay.
Yeah, I met with her last week.
Okay, good.
Start talking about some of those questions they have.
Excellent, excellent. So, other than that, are there any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks Denise. Next up, we have a public comment. Mr. Kales, you're here for a public comment? Come on up, and even though some of us know you, make sure you state your name and where you're from, please.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
My name is John Kales, and I'm from Hinckley Township. I did want to come here and just speak on a matter. At the June 17th Commissioner meeting, Commissioner Harrison made a short mention about an issue that will probably be before this board pretty soon. It was in regards to the Noaka meeting on June 13th. At that meeting, there was a resolution that was brought before the board, Resolution That resolution was looking to change the representation of Geogu County. Right now, they currently have three county commissioners on the board for all three of their seats. What they were looking to do is swap out one of those commissioners' seats for the Geogu County Highway Engineer. As Executive Director Grace Galucci explained the resolution, she made mention that, over the course of the years, Geogu County had looked to add a highway engineer to, to their representation. And because they have a very delicate balance with the formula that they figure out the representation, they explained that they would have to expand the board to about 80 or 90 members. So, that was never in the cards for them. They didn't want to give up their, their Cuyahoga County control, essentially. So, that was brought before them, you know, numerous times. Right now, they have two commissioners that, that had approached them looking to replace the third seat with the highway engineer. As we know, all of the Noaka Board representation can, can name their alternate. In this case, both of those two commissioners that were there actually have the highway engineer and, and assistant as their alternates, and one of the highway engineers was there in place of one of the commissioners. So, you know, to me, on its face, it looks like they're trying to create parity with, with everyone's representation. I don't necessarily believe that. I believe it's a targeted approach based by, based on the two county commissioners trying to get rid of the third commissioner, and more specifically, his alternate, who has probably been the most vocal opposition that Noaka faces on the board. I would say that there is a lot of commonality in the opinions that are expressed there, and I think it's wise for us to, to have challengers. You know, I think probably the most contentious thing that he did was ask for the board to follow directives that were, were put in place by President Trump, to get rid of some of the diversity, equity, and inclusivity. Equity is at the forefront of Noaka's plans, so I think they took umbrage with, with him wanting to do that, and this is a move to eliminate someone that's not afraid to speak up in front of that board. So, it was approved. It was, I think, a 19 to 17 vote. It was a very close vote. Even some people from Cuyahoga County recognized what was happening and did not want to surrender a, a voice on the board. But since it did pass, it's going to come before this board for ratification. That's partly because it's a bylaws change. It does have to go before all five counties, the Board of Commissioners, and they have to ratify. So, I'm here today to, to ask you not to ratify the changes to the Noaka bylaws, because we need every voice that we can get, and diversity is embraced, except the diversity of opinion, and I don't think that it's something that we can really afford to lose. So, I just, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
I'll just comment that, now we had the conversation, actually, it's a code of regulations. Bylaws kind of implies, but this, this is basically, and was always intended to have in former years, chaired when we would write, we wrote how serious we would take this, and to have a split vote indicates that you don't have consensus. You don't even have a, a super majority. You basically, it really is close to a split vote. We shouldn't be changing that fundamental document of the organization based on a split vote.
Not only a split vote, they had a quorum there, but that was less than a majority of the board members that in fact voted in favor of it, so there were some abstentions as well. But it was, it was an interesting dynamic when we went through that part of the meeting, and, and I still have some additional conversations I need to take, which is why it hasn't been before us yet, but, but I'm, that was kind of the opinion that I expressed at the same time, too. In addition to, I think there's some more comprehensive revisions we should be looking at in terms of the makeup of the board.
Historically, they always had the, their highway engineer as the alternate of one of the three commissioners, so it just, if we had a fundamental vote that required all three commissioners, they would, they would show up, but more often not, they would just go ahead and include their engineer that way. And, and I think that, that worked for decades, and there's no reason it couldn't work that way now.
Well, the irony of that discussion is, he participated in the discussion and actually cast a vote, so he was actually at the meeting when this was discussed, so it's not, it's not, it's just that it's not his seat, is essentially the, the change they're trying to make. So, it's a, it's a distinction, but it's, it's a somewhat minor one, because he could be at every meeting if, if they were inclined to have him there. I did circulate to the two of you on that same topic, the materials we received from Noaka, that was the action from the Geogu Board of Commissioners. So, they have officially taken action to support that. It was a, at the time, it was a 2-0 vote, because one of their commissioners, Ralph Spitalary, was, was out that day, and, and he did reach out to me and, and shared some of his opinions on that. He felt like there's, he feels like there's kind of a political component to this, too, is, might be the case, so. But like I said, I've got some additional discussions before we have in front of us to take action, but I appreciate the comments.
Hi, and John, I always appreciate how well you keep up on this information and support of Medina County, so it's really nice that you're always so informed, and you always are on top of what they're doing.
Any other public comment? Yep. Come on up and just state your name and where you're from, for the record.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Shannon Turney, and I'm from Lafayette Township. I'm here to ask if there's any discussion about the fair road. And if there's not, I want to bring it to the attention of the commissioners. I travel the fair road quite a bit, and it is a road. I have some friends who were born and raised in Medina County, and they think it's just an entrance to the fair. It has been traveled quite a bit, and I think that it's, it's an embarrassment to Medina County, because the fair is a very important part of Medina County. The fair road, if you've driven it lately, if you come in from Lafayette onto the fair road, the entrance there is deplorable. Potholes, concrete, or whatever the road is made of is, is wasting away. I have been thinking about changes to it, and I really think a left-turn lane should be put in there, should be widened. I think that people who leave the community center, there is not a stop sign there, and they feel that because it's straight in front of them, they can just go straight, and they really should be stopping because they're coming onto a road, and they don't realize that. Also, I feel as you continue to go north on the fair road, past the building, that the little side road there that goes to, and I think the city owns that part, but I'm not positive, because I know part of the road is the city and part is the county's. And the Ohio Department of Transportation knows that it's there, and they kind of oversee it, but they really don't have, they leave it up to the county and the city. And I feel as though that part that's kind of by the ticket booth should be stopped, and that you shouldn't be able to drive on that. It should only be for the city coming in to read the water meter. And so, I think you could also have a walking path next to the road. I think we could enhance it with some greenery, and just make it a little bit more pleasant and not really commercialized with the large building that's there. So, that's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
I was going to ask, with the consultant for the fair, working with the fair board, is that an issue that they're going to be addressing?
So, I don't know if you're aware, right now, we're under contract with a professional fairgrounds design company, and they're spending this year evaluating and, you know, imagining possibilities, and they're spending, they started a couple of months ago, Denise is it, about two months ago, and, and they'll be working through the summer, they'll be onsite at the fair, and then sometime this fall, they, they will give us their recommendations of possibilities to the future of, you know, maybe this should be there, that should be there, ideas and, and ways as we move forward in the property. The fair is so special to the community, and we've grown a lot in population, and so we, we thought it was important that a professional company evaluating the actual 84 acres and, and giving a plan for the future would be a good thing, so.
Thank you.
the community and we've grown a lot in population. And so we, we thought it was important that a professional company evaluating the actual 84 acres and, and giving a plan for the future would be a good thing. So.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thanks for being here. Additional public comment?
Question. Where did the formula come from for Noaka? Because I know you mentioned it at the meeting about possibly downsizing the size of Noaka.
It's had a long.
It looked to me like it was a damn UN meeting.
So the question was, for anyone who didn't hear, because Miles is getting the microphone ready, that, I'll get the, I'll restate the question. It was where the formula came from. And I don't know, for, this is for the Noaka Board.
There's a history of it. Actually, we used to have more members. And then back in the early 90s, we lost a member after some deal was, agreement between Medina County, I think Ralph Berry was president of the Noaka at that point in time, an agreement if the Cuyahoga County Commissioners would support the widening of I-71, we would be willing to lose a member. Unfortunately, is by the time the widening issue came up, the Cuyahoga County Commissioners forgot they had made that provision. But the trouble has to do is that the population, the population of the, of the various components have to be proportional to the membership. In its original composition, it was much larger and it didn't reflect population. So it has to be proportional, too. And the only way to come with where Geogu County has three people is have a board that size because of how small they are in population. So the only way to reduce the board is reduce the representation from Geogu County. And since it was fundamentally a creation of boards of commissioners, it was the counties that determined what the, that agreed what the total size was going to be. And that total aggregate has to be proportional. And since then, it was updated. There was a formula, actually, this is when I was down in the legislature. It's, if you look at, I probably still have the paper, is a very complicated formula to determine the representation, any changes in the, in that number. It's based upon the census numbers. So it's, it's a very complicated, it has to do with the Supreme Court case that when it comes to a representation on a council of government such as this, it has to be proportional population.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. It's, you're right. It is the UN.
You know, over $100 million being distributed. We have $2 million. And I saw all the others just got crumbs and then Cuyahoga County got.
The lion's share.
90% of it.
Yep.
Agreed.
It's just absurd.
Hard to argue with that.
One of the benefits of, of moving meetings is around is we have other, we have other folks from Medina County who can attend when we do it out of the county. So that's.
I am just glad they started, come back with that practice. I was on it, we, we did move around every summer and there was the opportunity to learn about the other counties. And when they stopped doing that, that's unfortunate because basically it was everything had to be in Cuyahoga.
Well, I think, I think the one, the thing I'll say, too, about the benefit of having that meeting in Lurin County, that some of the creature comforts for the board that, that make it very easy to see the presentations weren't there. But I think for the folks who were there, Mr. Kalas, Mr. Sheets were both there. You, I said, you had a lot better view, I would say, from what you would typically see. Because really, it's not, they don't do a great job in the typical meeting board in Cleveland of making the, the content accessible to the public. This was, I think, a better accessible to the public and maybe not as well accessible to the board, which I'm totally in favor of. So.
Well, I, I will just say the design of the, of the, of how they designed the boardroom up in Cleveland where they did, it was not, for all the years I served, was not in that configuration. And that was intentional.
Yeah.
It was intentional to make it less, less visible for the attending public.
If we would make the board a little smaller, we might, we might, we might accomplish that. So, moving on, because I, well, this is, I had a Noaka Board meeting on June 13th and I usually take a couple of weeks to decompress and all this talk of it, I need to move on to something else. So we have a notice of liquor permit filing, just to read for the record. The Commissioners received notice of a liquor permit stock transfer request from Pilot Travel Centers LLC, DBA Pilot Travel Center 013, located at 8924 Lake Road, Westfield Township, Medina, Ohio. This is for a C1, C2 permit class. No, we are not requesting hearing and this notice is being provided for the record. So we have that. Anything else for discussion session? Brandon, do you have anything? Denise, anything for discussion? John? Matt? Nothing? Colleen?
I will make a motion to consider.
Well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you have anything for discussion?
I do not. I jumped.
I want to bring up, we had a request to, you might have seen from the emails, look at visitor parking, the county administration's short term. I'm starting to examine that. Actually, I've got a meeting later this morning with, or this afternoon with Dennis Hanwell, the City of Medina. I want to talk to them about our street parking here, that's short term. Yeah, I don't think that's been visited for a long time. We have that 15-minute along here. Not sure, maybe it should be longer, but I'm going to talk to him about, we ought to be looking at all our parking options for those that just want to come in, drop off stuff and then get out. And frankly, the more traffic we can keep from going on to the end of the parking lot, it's safer for people to walk out there. And we're not utilizing totally the parking that's available along the street. So I think it's, like to talk to them about.
Are they pretty strict about monitoring the 15 minutes?
They have more recently been very strict. And for 15 minutes, that's way too short. And I think that, but I, it hasn't been visited in a long time. So I want to, if it's all right with you, I'll just go ahead and start pursuing that and taking a look and see what our parking options are.
I was also curious, Matt, if there's been any discussion, because we haven't quite finished the signage and all those kinds of things. In connection with that, when we've got an identified main entrance, has there been any thought given to having some dedicated spots in the lot? Because we don't have the islands anymore. Sure. Yeah, we don't have the islands anymore. So I think we kind of thought we wouldn't need those.
We don't want to create islands.
Right. I agree.
Or, or, or posts that go up and they're impediment to plowing and.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't know that we have the configuration to accommodate guest visitor parking in the new parking lot because the spaces that are closest to the building have all been designated for handicap.
Which is good because in February and July, when people are coming in to pay taxes, those get filled out.
In fact, we added, well, we restriped a couple of weeks ago, we added an additional handicap space. There are still maybe three, four that are not handicapped, that are still relatively close to the building. It'd be closest to door B.
Yeah. And that's the other thing. That's not going to be the main entrance. And so it's a bad spot for visitor parking.
Correct. And that, the wayfinding plan, that's still in the works. So we're meeting with a, with a vendor right now to improve the visibility.
And we may want to ask more employees to park away from the entrances rather than so close. Just for the residents, particularly during the, the high-volume seasons of tax, tax collections.
Yeah. And I could certainly work with you with, with Mary Hanwell. We can see if we can find some solutions.
Yeah. And like I said, I don't think it's been studied or addressed in a very long time.
Well, and there, and just if, if that were a solution, even if it was just identified as visitor parking, there's, I believe, three spots there.
At least more.
I think, I think we only ever had two that were visitor parking out here at least. Was it, were there four?
We had, we had six.
Were they on both sides of the side?
Yeah. Because again, we had handicap as well.
Well, that used to be Commissioners' reserved space when I came in in the 90s.
I'm glad that was changed.
Me too. 100%.
I would have been quick to change that.
All it took was one annexation, all it took was one annexation meeting and somebody saying they knew where my car was parked. For me to decide that was not a good place to park the car.
And Steve, you're right. We don't want like visitor parking, the plowing and the, to have new posts when we went away from all that for maintenance is not a good idea.
Drilling in a brand new concrete, all those things. Okay, that's fine. Yeah, thanks, Matt.
And I will mention while I'm up here, for the elevator project here at this admin building, we have about two weeks remaining for that project. So I know that's been an inconvenience for meetings and those trying to get into various offices on the second and third floor. So about two weeks and then we'll be completed with that project.
Great. Good. Thanks, Matt. Anything else, Steve?
Nope.
There was another email we received related to a letter of support for the Imagination Library. I don't know if either of you saw that. I was going to sign my name to it and then I realized they were asking for your organization's signature. So this is, and it's just to express that this is a program that for, I think everybody is familiar with. It's the, part of Imagination Library helps more than 6,000 children in Medina County. And it's just expressing support for the benefits that it provides related to literacy.
Yeah, I was in the legislature when, when Dwyane was starting the initiative and.
So are we okay with, as a board, when I realized it was an organization, I thought, well, we better, I'm sure, I thought I knew the answer everybody would have.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
I'll forward that to you and then if you could just sign it on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
It's a very reputable organization.
Oh, it's great. It's, it's fantastic. My kids have, have benefited from it as well.
Oh, yeah.
That was all I had.
I was premature before, but I think I'm good now. I will make a motion to go into executive session to consider the investigation of complaints against a public employee.
I will second the motion.
Motion, second, roll call, please.
Swedick? Yes. Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes. Thank you, everybody.
Happy Fourth.
Next week, yeah, happy Fourth of July.